Okay, so I'm Austin Taylor. I'm the Executive Director of BikeWalk Provo. This council debate is hosted by three advocacy organizations in Provo. It's hosted by BikeWalk Provo, which I'm in charge of, YMB Provo, which Spencer's in charge of, he's one of the moderators, and the Provo Residence Sustainability Committee, which Dawn is in charge of, and he's also one of the moderators. So the topics today will be focused on environmental sustainability, housing and development, and transportation. The council candidates were not given the questions beforehand, but they were given the topics, and so they could do a little research on the topics if they hadn't already. These are key issues that are facing Provo, and the council is uniquely tasked with solving these issues as they're over the budget and as they're over policy. They're tasked, they're given the tools to fix some of these problems that the city has. So we're really excited to hear what they have to say about these topics. So first, I will turn, we're going to turn the time over to all the candidates. They're going to do a one-minute opening statement. And statement, you know, what we're going to do is we'll go-
I have to turn off my iAirPods, is that why?
Yes, so if you, if you're not a candidate or a moderator, please turn your video off and audio and I-
You can get it on yours.
Anyways, we're gonna go A through Z with the candidates for opening statements, and they'll be each given one minute and all.
Computer, that'd be the best.
Austin, is that A through Z by last name?
We're doing first name.
First name.
Do you see whose sound is coming through? I can't see who it is.
Ken Taylor.
Ken Taylor, okay, I'm gonna mute here. Okay, great, so yeah, we'll go A through Z, I'll call out the names. So first is Aaron. So give us your opening statement, Aaron.
Sure, thank you, Austin, and thank you, Dawn, and the other organizers of this opportunity to make the public in Provo more aware of the issues. This is a wonderful opportunity, I thank you for taking the initiative to organize this debate. I'm Aaron Scavland, I'm in the River Grove neighborhood, I've lived there for the last 15 years, and it's issues that we're going to talk about tonight that in large part motivated me to run for City Council citywide. Just to give a quick introduction, my day job is at BYU, I teach in the history department there. And in the River Grove neighborhood for the last 15 years, I've been very involved. I've served as Assistant Chair, Co-Chair, and Chair of that neighborhood. I've done a lot to improve our local park, Lyons Park, but also the walkability of our neighborhood. Beyond that, I've been very involved in improving, making active transportation safer and more convenient throughout Provo. First, is that a minute?
A minute, thanks, Aaron.
That's a minute, so wow, okay, thank you.
Next we have Cory Porter.
And me, good evening, thanks for letting me introduce myself. I have lived in Provo all of my life. I served as a member of the Fire Department for 30 years, the last five and a half is the Fire Chief. I certainly have an vested interest in the city. I was appointed by Governor Herbert to be the State Fire Marshal in January 2013, and that's a position I still currently hold, although one of my mailers said that I'm the former State Fire Marshal. Over the past 20 years, 20-plus years, I've managed multimillion-dollar budgets, both at the city and state level. I know, I understand, I have considerable experience both establishing and managing budgets. Public safety's been a big part of my adult life. I'm a huge believer that appropriate investments in our police-fire-emergency services will continue to keep our families safe. I know a lot of difficult issues relate to land use zoning and density. I've served as the Chair of the Provo's Planning Commission a few years, a number of years ago. I understand the efforts that are needed to guide future growth and development. I lived in the Franklin neighborhood most of my life, had a short stint up in the Grandview area and came back, so nothing bad about me, thanks.
That's a minute, thank you, Cory. Okay, next we have George Handley.
Thank you, Austin, my name's George Handley. I'm currently serving on the City Council and just as a representative of District 2, and I'm running again because I have really enjoyed serving and I want to continue to serve. I feel like I've been able to make a positive difference for the city, especially around things that motivated me to run, which include a lot of the topics we'll be talking about tonight. And I also am a passionate believer in being a bridge builder and a communicator and standing up for civility, and so I will hope to continue that commitment if I'm elected to a second term. And I am very concerned about the housing crisis. I don't know that I have all the solutions to that, but that's another issue that's weighing pretty heavily on my mind. But I've been involved in civic affairs for most of my life, and I really has been a great honor in my life to serve on the council.
Thanks, George, that's exactly a minute. Okay, we've got Hawk, and is that how you say your name, is it Hawk?
You're still muted. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, very good, okay. Well, yeah, that's fine, that's fine, you're good, Austin. First, I'd like to say thank you to everyone for putting this debate together. And my name is Hawk Vu, I'm running for Provo City Council citywide. My website is just my name, hawkvu.org. I'm on Facebook at HawkforProvo. And a little bit about myself, I was born in Vietnam, and I migrated to the United States at age 10 with my family. I've been a resident Provo since 1992. I got my MBA from BYU. I operate a small business, I invest in real estate rentals, and I occasionally dab in the stock market when I have time. I served in Iraq war, you know, '06-'07 as an Army Operations Intelligence Officer. I've served prior as a Republican Party County and State Delegate. I was volunteer for President's campaign, and I've served prior, is my minute up?
That's a minute.
Okay, boy, the time goes by quickly.
You're having fun.
Okay, next we have Catrice.
Hello, my name is Catrice McKay, and I'm running for the citywide seat. I grew up in Provo, I have lived in Provo most of my life. There are three things I'll focus on as a member of Provo City Council. The three initiatives are, first, we need to conserve the open spaces and parks in Provo. Once that land is gone, it's incredibly hard to get back without extreme measures. And second, we want to be forward-thinking in zoning, planning, and development around all the natural resources in Provo. Third, neighborhoods matter. Neighborhoods are among the greatest assets that we have. As a council member, it would be my job to make sure that we are listening, actively supporting, and engaging with all neighborhoods.
Thank you, Catrice. Okay, next we have Landon.
All right, Landon Johnson, running for the citywide seat. I live in Provo with my wife and my two baby boys. That is the, that's the primary reason why I'm running for City Council, is I care about the quality of life, not just now, but over the next 20-plus years as I raise my family here. My professional background is as a commercial lender and also in real estate. I've worked for a community bank headquartered here in Provo for the past 10 years. I really love my job, I love working with small business every day. I love analyzing what will work and how to make things grow, and how people start new businesses. Aside from professional, my current service role is I am the Secretary on the Board of Directors for the Food and Care Coalition.
Thanks, Landon, that's a minute. Hey, Rachel.
Hi, I'm Rachel. Years ago, when I was serving as the Acting Chair in the Mazur neighborhood, I was asked to run for City Council, and I didn't feel like I was ready, so I've worked to prepare myself to do this. I've continued to serve as an advocate in our community, both with the Bicycle Committee before it was BikeWalk Provo, with the Sustainability Committee. Right now, I'm on the Provo Metropolitan Water Board, and I've also served on the boards for different nonprofits, including the Nature Conservancy. As a member of the boards for the Water Board and the Nature Conservancy, I've had the work to review and approve multimillion-dollar budgets as well. Something else about me, I'm now an attorney in Provo, I went to school at BYU. Our family had come here originally as students, and then again, as a young professional, and we've stayed here and made this our home. We choose to raise our children in downtown Provo in the Mazur neighborhood. We've had two kids go to Provo High, and the last one will be going to Tempe this fall. And I'm just really excited about the opportunity to advocate for these downtown neighborhoods as we face the challenges of development in the future.
Thanks, Rachel. And then last, we have Zach Green.
Hi, everybody, I'm tempted to say thanks for leaving the best for last, but honestly, I feel a little bit humbled by the opportunity to be here. My name is Zach Green, I'm a little bit newer to the neighborhood than some of the other people running for City Council, but Provo's really become my home. It's the place where I started my family, and it's the place where I hope to raise my children. And as such, I really care about making Provo the best place possible for them. I have a lot of experience, I grew up in the house of an engineer, and so I have a lot of experience with zoning and road design issues, and it's something that I grew up around, and it's something that I care about deeply. I'm excited for the opportunity to serve because at my very core, I want to leave a positive impact in the places that I am, and I'm excited to collaborate and work with other people to achieve that, and the City Council is going to be an opportunity to do just that. And that's my time.
Thank you. Okay, now we're gonna turn it over to Dawn. Dawn's gonna lead us in a discussion about sustainability. He has questions, and we will do the same thing. Each candidate will get one minute to respond to each question, so y'all can weigh in on the issues.
Okay, my first question is really predictable. Air pollution in Provo is a growing problem every summer, and during a few weeks every winter. What will you do to improve Provo's air quality? So that's the question, what will you do to improve Provo's air quality?
And Dawn, do you want to call out the candidates, or do you want me to?
Well, I thought we were going to go on-
Yeah, just A through Z, just how we did it.
Sure, if you can remember the alphabet, let's go with it.
All right, that's me. Thanks for that question, Dawn, it's a really important question. I will do what I've been doing for the last 15 years and expand on what I've been doing. Air pollution requires a comprehensive solution to the problem. We need to, as Provo grows, we need to have fewer miles driven, and to do that, we gotta give people ways to get around our city in other ways than through single occupant audible commutes. And we also have to allow people to live closer to where they work, where do they go to school, and to make, you know, transit and walking and biking and these other modes of transportation viable.
Thank you, Aaron.
I think I'm next. So obviously, same sort of thing, public transportation, we need to probably provide better incentives to increase ridership. At the state, we implemented teleworking. We can link air quality to work-from-home days. Right now, we send out a text every day to the employees, some of them are called surge employees. We look at air quality measurements every single day, and then we send out text messages to tell them whether they can work at the office or work from home. And that, again, could be expanded, but we do that currently at the state level, it works very well. The other thing is providing educational opportunities, messaging, online training, and encourage businesses to educate, you know, employees how to reduce emissions.
I think I was next. I would echo a lot of the things that have been said. I think developing in the right places to maximize the ability to walk and get to where one needs to go without using a car is really the ultimate goal. And I've been a voice for trying to have a sustainability plan for the city that would include some goals about miles or vehicle, vehicle trips per day, because I think reducing that is key. I do think we still have some, a lot of work to do with building codes and building standards so that we can reduce the amount of waste that buildings emit. And I think we need to help UVX complete its work as it looks to find ways to extend and expand its services, and also help that last mile of connection to be available to more people.
I think Hawk is next, right?
Hi, okay, so yeah, so reducing density balance, balancing out density to help with congestion, obviously, traffic is the major source of air pollution. In addition to, well, we used to have Geneva Steel, but anyways, obviously, maintain, grow our trees. But probably the most important part is efficient, making the most efficient use of infrastructure to reduce the distance it needs to be traveled to work, school, et cetera. So that way, there's, so that people aren't traveling from one end of the city to the other just because of living arrangements and work arrangements and so on.
Okay, I think it could be Catrice next. Catrice, you're muted still.
Sorry. Okay, it is a fact that fossil fuels are obviously contributing to this, and they are a finite resource, and so change is inevitable. It is best to start the change in before thinking such that we're not working in a crisis mode, that we have more control over how we make these changes as a necessity down the road. As a, as a city, Provo has already had great vision. Currently, Provo uses the largest percentage of renewable energy in the state, right? There will be 48% by the end of 2022, and the goal is to be 60% 2030, thanks to our council and committees like yourselves. This is doing a large part to you guys and the committees that we're talking to tonight, but we can do better, and we're on the right track. But we need to, I support the objective, I look forward to moving forward. We do electric cars are coming fast, we need to make sure that our upgrades for our power grids are ready, including and encouraging charging stations that would require any tax incentives or incentives for electric vehicles. And I'll take responsibility as a member of the council. Is that time?
I think there's two big keys, I think it is incentivize, and I think it is educate. So we need to incentivize the activities that we want people to participate in. You make your recycling bin $1, $2, $3 cheaper than your garbage bin, and you need to let people know. You get mass transit, but you need to do a better job of educating people so that we have the masses on the transit. It does no good for buses to be running with one person on them. We gotta get those filled, we got, we've got to make sure that people know how to get where they're going in a better way, developing in the right ways. We do need these multi-mixed-use developments. I know there's a couple really exciting ones that are happening right now, and I think they're in great spots, and credit to the existing council and planning and more of that. But, but the city that we're in, the technology that we have, there's no reason why we shouldn't be getting the word out on all the possible incentives that we can.
Okay, Rachel.
Hey there. Some of the things that I would have said have already been mentioned. I do support in addition to upgrading the building codes and standards, helping with retrofits of existing structures, maybe doing that through grants or CBDG funds. Other things that are useful are, you know, anti-addaling campaigns, I've worked on those in the past. Single-stroke engine exchanges where you can trade out your, your really dirty leaf blower lawnmower for an electric one. That actually helps quite a bit with the immediate air quality problems. We also need to look at changing up some of our existing zoning so that we can have more mixed use within established neighborhoods. So neighborhood grocery stores, things like the Hut or the Provo Bicycle Collective that we've got in the Waki neighborhood, we need more of that, so that there are things that people can walk to to get services they need within their residential areas. That strict division between residential and commercial forces driving, and that is terrible for us. So that's another way that we can help reduce some of these trips and driving, and sorry, my cat just walks in front of me. All of these are, are things that, that can help with our air quality.
Hey, Zach.
The name of the game is definitely density and placement of services. If we're in a, if we're in a community where people have to drive to get to work because they live four or five miles away, and there's not an efficient way to use mass transit to get there, then people are going to drive. And it's just a natural situation that we have in our community. And so the key going forward is increasing development in places where close to services, and increasing services in places where there's high development. If people can walk to get the services they need, they can walk to get the grocery like you have over on 700 and 800 at that corner, then people will walk. But they have to have the opportunity, and if they don't have the opportunity, no matter how much they want to conserve and prevent greenhouse gases, it's unrealistic to drive halfway across the city to go and pick up your groceries to walk half across, halfway across the city to get back to your house.
Bikes are the answer.
Okay, Austin, do we go to the next subject?
Next question in the same subject.
Or you want me to stick with?
Yeah, keep going.
Okay, all right, well, as pollution from vehicles decreases, buildings and houses will soon become the main sources of Provo's air pollution. What will you do to encourage more energy-efficient new buildings as well as upgrading existing structures? But I point out to the candidates that building codes are usually set by the state, and it's kind of hard for the city to change the building codes, but there could be incentives we could have, so take it away. So, so we go in the same order again?
I think you should mix it up.
Mix it up, okay, why don't we go, why don't we go back to front? How about we start with Zach?
Oh, boy. Like you said, Dawn, a lot of the, a lot of these issues are controlled by the state. And I think that one of the things that city councilors can do as a, having a position of power in the community, is to actively talk to the state officials and advocate for our community so that we can improve those building codes and update them to current standards that would better suit the needs of our community. I think that doing that will help to create a better working relationship between the state and the community, between the state and the city, and over time, we'll be able to pull those codes to places where we want them, places that will limit CO2 emissions and cut back on greenhouse gases.
Okay, Rachel, you're next.
All right, I feel like I got a head start on this one. So I know that we can't change the building code as a city, but we can certainly work with developers and give them incentives to encourage them to reach a higher standard as they're putting things in, especially if they're doing big commercial developments or large projects. I really care honestly about helping existing property owners upgrade their property. There are lots of ways that we can do these retrofits, not just for emissions, but also for seismic issues, because we have a lot of unreinforced brick masonry structures. And honestly, if we have an earthquake and all of those have to replace, the environmental impact of all of that new construction at once is going to be huge. So if we can reinforce those structures now, we can save ourselves a problem in the future. Another thing I want to look at are programs to help homeowners upgrade their furnaces and HVAC systems. This is relatively low-hanging fruit, and there's grant money available, especially if we're dealing with lower-income families and homes. Oh, I'm out of time, later.
Okay, Landon.
All right, I feel like I'm gonna give the same two words again, is I think we incentivize and we educate. So even though the state does have a lot of say on building code, and a lot of developers care about making money and trying to do that according to the rules that they have from the state. Provo's a powerhouse in the state. We have, I mean, we have Provo power, so we have a lot of control of different incentives that we could do. And if we educated people on those, I think they would want to take advantage of that. If we, if we offer incentives for people to be more energy-efficient, for people to retrofit their houses to be more efficient, then they're going to do that, and we can't give the farm away. We're not made of money, but if it's a net positive to the city, then I think we incentivize what we want them to do and make sure that they're aware that they can do it.
Thank you, Catrice. You're muted.
Got it. I agree, thank you. I agree that we definitely need more education. We are going to be the most successful in sustainability goals in Provo if we get the buy-in of the residents, right? Like I know my family did the rebates with thermostats and with the furnace, and took advantage of those and replaced them. The Sustainability Natural Resources Committee is a huge part of this. I know that right now, announcements or information come from the utility company mostly, right? But there's people that do auto pay, there's people that don't look at their mail. We need to expand our education where, I mean, people are on screens all the time. What about doing internet ads or targeting, you know, Provo residents on the internet? We could go through, we could do a Provo app that could, people could go to for all information, Provo. And there could be tons of sustainability issue, you know, options on there, and there's so much that we do with apps nowadays, just makes it easier. Give voting, you know, give voting information, we give lots of information on the app. But we could buy billboards based in downtown Provo that's just for sustainability goals or Provo issues. But the fact that the one, the one lawn, the gas lawnmower that you told about, Dawn, with your guys' green exchange, the fact that one lawnmower does 11 cars, that's a shocking stat that everyone needs to hear.
Thanks, Catrice. Hawk, you're next.
Hi, so my answers are conditioned and qualified upon, obviously, the cost for implementation, right? So that, that's, that's a bottom line, you got to take that into account. So one of the things the city's doing right now is through the energy-efficient incentives. I don't know what the cost of that versus the benefits the city's getting from it, but if the benefits exceed the cost, I'm for that. Again, with, you know, so far, improving building codes, new construction, those kind of things, it needs to be practical, it can't like discourage new developments with too, too much, too many restrictions and so on. I mentioned before, trees, growing trees, that, that is a part of Provo we love anyways, so that, that helps. And businesses with more efficient equipment and machinery, when we bring, okay, I'm out.
So I think, I think our city center is hopefully setting a good example. Obviously, we had direct control over what we wanted in that building, but I think, I hope that, that trend can continue. I do think we should take full advantage of having a publicly-owned power company. UMPA is fantastic, and Kevin Garlick is a terrific leader, and Travis Ball, Head of Our Energy in Provo, they're very supportive of the idea of community solar. And I think that's something that we ought to look into. It doesn't, it doesn't address the immediate concern of the actual structure that one has, but it helps over the long term if, if we can get some major players in the city to build solar farms together and get more of our energy from, from renewable sources, I think will be a step in the right direction. But I do think incentives are the way to go, and I've always loved the idea of maybe having the Sustainability Committee come up with a plan for competitions between businesses to try to, you know, make it cool again to be, to be renewable and clean and energy efficiency in the buildings that people use so that they're- efficiency in in the buildings that that people use so that they're competing with one another. It's been shown to work with residents.
Thank you, George. Cory, you get the last word? No, and then Aaron.
I'll give the last word to Aaron. So I'm a proponent of a lot of these things. You need to understand that the legislature, they work for us. And I've worked with the legislature for, gosh, 30 years. We maintain the codes. I've been heavily involved in building and fire codes for many, many years. The difficulty we have oftentimes is there's a large number of legislators who are home builders and there is some resistance to that. We are currently only in the 2015 energy code. And that's not, that's been facing a lot of things. So it's small efforts. For example, introducing the low NOx water heaters or ultra low NOx water heaters for emissions. Those efforts went through the legislature. You can make a difference at the legislature. They set the goals, but we we can drive those kinds of things. And working with the League of Cities and Towns and others saying this is what we as residents want to have and move that forward. It's not an impossible task, but it does take relationship building and it does take those efforts. So thanks.
Aaron, you get the last word?
Oh, thank you. So I think this debate itself is a step toward generating ideas and educating the public about what needs to happen. You know, Catrice's idea of a Provo app, I think is a great one. Also, there's been mention of incentivizing incentivizing programs such as Smart Choice, you know, rebates for energy efficient appliances and solar. Those are all things that I've taken advantage of. And also as a neighborhood chair, I regularly pushed out, you know, these opportunities for people to retrofit and make their homes more efficient. So, you know, I intend to, you know, not just talk the talk when I'm on the council, but to to walk the walk as I I've as I've been doing for the last 15 years.
Okay. I have one more question. Is that right, Austin?
Last question.
And I I would like to put George Hanley, let him be the first one because he's thought a lot about this anyway. He doesn't have any any opposition. So he 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 is a an overachiever here by participating, even though he doesn't have to compete in the in the primary. This is the question, and this is right down Georgia's alley. Open space is vital for public well being. What policies will you support for parks, trails, wildlands, and some remaining agriculture in Provo?
Well, I can tell you what we're doing right now, and that is that we've created a a plan. We're putting together a committee for foothills and canyons plan for the city so that we can look really closely at what needs to be done. And I also helped found a conserve Utah Valley, a nonprofit over the Christmas holiday this year. And they are working closely with the city to help us identify properties that are vulnerable to development that we would not like to see developed. I can just tell you without going into a lot of detail that that you there you we have to be absolutely vigilant on this issue because there is always going to be a threat to our open space unless we're proactive and not merely reactive. We almost lost Bridalvale Falls because of because of that. So I think it's really important that we put into place a proactive plan as we're putting together right now.
Okay, well, let's just go back through the alphabet again. Aaron, how about we start with you then?
Sure, I think open space is hugely important for our quality of life for these other environmental issues that we've been discussing. But I think it's important to remember that open space is not just important for the east side of Provo, for our foothills and our canyons, but also for the west side. Preserving agricultural land, preserving open space. You know, Provo doesn't need to become West Valley City and sprawl. And this this has everything to do with with kind of development and kind of redeveloping and infill in our core rather than sprawling in the periphery. So I've been a longtime supporter of Sean Miller's efforts with the to preserve local agriculture and and open space on the west side. And I intend to continue to do that when I'm on the council.
Okay, Cory?
Yeah, I have to agree. Obviously, open spaces is something we need to protect in a lot of different areas, but it doesn't mean we can't have development with pocket parks with some of the smaller neighborhoods. I know from working with neighbor works here in Provo, we've submitted some designs for areas where even green space can be part of a multi-family development with with center core of green and the parking towards the outside. There's a lot of ways to do this. We can also, we need to protect the big areas so that we can have community events, those kind of things. But we can also protect green space in the development as we move forward.
Okay, Hawk?
Yeah, so that's one of the best parts of living in Provo is our parks, our open space and trails and so on. Um, I would want to encourage residents' participation, maybe more community efforts. That, I mean, that would definitely help just because I don't think the city can just be responsible for everything. So there's plenty of open space in West Provo. And going forward, I I would want to stick with the current master plan, including maintain the agriculture character of of West Provo and and not over not overdeveloped that part. And then just maintaining minimum standards when we do planning for infrastructure and development going forward, just to have a plan in place to preserve that.
Hey, Catrice?
Um, this is a subject passionate to my campaign. Bydell Falls is one of the reasons that I considered running. But I agree with a lot of things a lot of the other candidates said. We're a tree city, I want to maintain that. I know a development just over here by my house, they got rid of a whole line of beautiful mature trees for that development. That's something we need to look at. Should beautiful mature trees that are healthy be cut down just for developments? That's something the city could protect. Marshlands, we have, I like it, like Cory was saying, I love the idea of using some of our natural resources like marshlands and different things we want to protect and building pocket neighborhoods around them where they become an asset of that neighborhood. And you know, something that adds to the community and neighborhood. We need to do, we have marshlands at some of our entrances to the city, make them into parks, make them accessible and beautiful and something that is a park to that everyone can be accessible to everyone.
Good. Landon?
I I chose the area of Provo that I live in because of the open space. It literally brought me to where I am. So I am extremely sensitive to how important it is. I've lived my whole life here, I've spent a million hours in Provo Canyon and in the mountains. I love to to fish, to hunt, to be out on Utah Lake in the boat. All things outdoors is what's great about Provo, what's great about Utah. So we need to preserve that. And I know the other side of the coin is that we want to grow, we want to develop the land that we have. But we only have so much land, and that is why we need to be deliberate in how we grow it. Because it's, in my opinion, it's not worth jumping on developing all this land too quick and in the wrong spots and losing what makes this place great.
Thank you, Larry. Rachel?
All right, so with George, I also work with conserve Utah Valley. And something that I like to see on that is how nonprofits and the city can both work with private property owners if they want to put easements on their property to protect the open space and the character of the land that they've grown up with and worked and loved. I think that's a really great policy option that we can do that would protect the rights of private property owners. Something else I'd like to see is to increase more dedicated funding for things like the Provo River Trail and other trail development and maintenance, especially along the Bonneville Shoreline Trail. The shoreline trail and access is a huge asset to our city. And we want to preserve the ability for all of our residents to be able to go up, access that trail and use it and not have those access points cut off by development. And part of that can be working with developers if they're looking at some of these areas that are not in the the conservation zone that would protect them from development in the foothills. See how they can set up development to protect access.
Okay, thank you. Zach, you get the last word here?
Thank you. I I've, when I think about Provo, one of the favorite, my favorite things is going to Joaquin Park, which is luckily right around the corner. And me and my wife will like fly kites and we'll throw frisbees. It's a great time. I I think that the pro, it's it's easy though to forget that the parks aren't just a quality of life advantage for the people living in Provo. It's also an economic boon to the city. When we have well maintained parks, it is an economic driver in the areas around those parks. It encourages development and encourages people to 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 move in and take care of the space that they have. And so going forward, I think it's vitally important that we protect the green spaces that we have and make sure that appropriate use is made of them so that people can enjoy them. But also so that we can make proper, so we can properly appreciate them as we continue to grow our city.
Thank you, some very thoughtful answers. So I feel encouraged.
Yeah, all the candidates, great. Okay, we're going to turn it over to Spencer now. Spencer is the director of YMB Provo.
I think you need to explain what YMB is.
So YMB is an acronym, it stands for Yes in My Backyard. It's a national movement that's kind of been taking off the last few years in support of affordable housing and many different cities. Yeah, and so that's basically what YMB Provo is for. We're trying to help encourage affordable housing, more dense housing often. And just, you know, looking forward to the future of Provo here. So we're going to change up the order just a little bit when I do it, just that way we keep on hitting Aaron, for example, with the first off the bat. Give him a break. So our first question is, according to recent research by the Kempsey Gardner Policy Institute up at the U, the statewide median home price has increased to $475,000. This was back in May. And that was a 30% increase from last year. According to Zillow, the average Provo home is now valued at $423,000, a more than 25% jump in home prices from a year ago. Many of our friends, neighbors and family members want to live in Provo. But unfortunately, due to these rapidly escalating prices, they are getting priced out of Provo and the region in general. And the question is, what policies would you pursue if elected to help keep housing affordable in Provo? And we will start with Landon and just go through the alphabet through there. So Landon?
All right, let me stack this one hour answer into 60 seconds. So I I mean, I'm I'm a real estate guy, I'm dealing with this every day. It's a supply and demand market issue. No one on the city council is going to flip a switch and make the housing market more affordable. What we can do is we can help to increase the supply. And my my focus is that we increase that supply in the right ways, in the right areas. I've been working with the Food and Care Coalition to put 72 truly affordable units in downtown Provo. I'm super proud of that. It's going to be done in spring. But we don't just need single tenant, multifamily units. We need starter homes. We need homes for larger families. We need, in general, we need more supply. So being rational, making sure we do that in the right ways is a big focus for me that I really care about.
Okay, thank you. That'd be. Rachel will be next.
Thank you. This is such a tricky mess. I'm really glad that there's the opportunity for detached accessory dwelling units right now in the city. I honestly think that it might be useful to expand the opportunity to detached accessory dwelling units for houses that already have attached accessory dwelling units. That's going to be a really tricky thing to do because you've got parking issues and how you can integrate that into the neighborhoods. Sorry, I had a tickle in my throat.
We're giving you extra seconds for that one.
Another thing that we need to do is look at building more dense housing in appropriate areas, especially the transportation oriented districts. So when we were doing the Mazer Neighborhood Plan, we identified areas within the Mazer Neighborhood that would be excellent to have the increased housing and to be able to have the high density housing transition down to lower density housing so that we're still able to preserve the single family character of the bulk of the Mazer Neighborhood. And so working closely with the neighborhoods and with the planning commission, I think that we can increase the density significantly, both with those accessory dwelling units and with the high density housing in appropriate areas.
Zach?
Right now, Joaquin Neighborhood holds the vast majority of the student population. And even though we're talking about homeownership, the student population really does matter in this discussion because the fact that so many units or so many houses and units are rented out to the students means that there's more pressure on the rest of the system. Joaquin Neighborhood Plan currently advocates for moving high density mixed use housing options closer to campus. And then as you move south, it slowly transitions back towards single family housing. I I support this wholeheartedly and it's a win win for everybody. Students are benefited by being moved closer to campus because I don't know a single student that wouldn't rather walk out the door and be on BYU campus rather than driving halfway across the city to get there. So if we move, if we encourage the movement of density closer to BYU, it'll benefit everybody and help us to relieve some of that pressure off of the rest of the system so that starter families and and those looking to buy homes have more options.
That'd be, Aaron would be next now.
Thank you, Spencer, and thank you for heading this important organization and bringing up this important issue. So I would agree with what's been been said. I think we need to loosen the ADU regulations all across the city. Every neighborhood can contribute to helping to resolve this problem. And this is not just about, you know, students. This is about, you know, workforce housing, making sure that we have affordable housing for our teachers and firefighters and others. We need greater density throughout Provo, especially along our transit lines and around BYU as Zach was suggesting. And it's important to remember that this, we we need to take a comprehensive approach and that this is related to Dawn's first question about air pollution. If if we make good housing choices, then that has a tremendous influence on our transportation issues and on our pollution problems.
Thank you, Aaron. And next to this, Cory?
Thank you. So again, a tough top topic, but you know, I remember the Kim Gardner Institute a few years ago did a 10 year study and found that impact fees and permit fees had been increased by 26% and that helping raw land increased 40%. And that's been a few years ago. So costs are pushed onto the home buyer. I I agree that the density needs to be obviously looked at. We worked with Representative Ward this earlier this year in passing House Bill 82, single family housing modifications, which push the cities a little bit more to develop areas and designate zones within their city land use and stuff to have the ADUs. There were some fire code issues that we were able to work around. We work with the builders to make that affordable to those that wanted to have an accessory dwelling unit. So there's a lot of different options here, but we need to probably look as a city, how do we
I think.
balance a little bit better those impact fees and stuff? Thanks.
George?
Yeah, thank you. I I think it's really important that the public learns that the growth that's happening in Utah County and especially in Provo is our own. own population growing. It's not, there's a, there's a perception that this is like, you know, people from California or wherever coming in. So it's really about our own uh, future generations. So it's, it's, uh, it's very close to home and I think we have to recognize this, not as a problem of us versus them, but it's a problem with us. I would just add a couple of quick thoughts and one is we've been needing a housing audit in the city for some time. We're lacking really good data and I think we need to have that happen as soon as possible so that we really know what we're looking at. Our, my suspicion is we're missing a lot in the middle. Uh, the missing middle of housing is, is a problem. And I also think that, that the state is looking at this very closely. And our council is going to have to be in very close uh, conversation with our state legislature to make sure that the rest of the county is doing their fair share because we actually are already burdened with more affordable housing projects in Provo than anywhere else in the county.
Thank you, George. And then Hawk.
Yeah, I think we've got to keep in mind that uh, uh, real estate prices go in cycles and right now, the real estate crisis is a, a problem nationwide, not just Provo. So we're keep that in mind. It is a supply and demand issue. So I think we've got to make most efficient use of our current housing resources before we want to build more uh, and increase the, the density. Uh, we need to have infrastructure connectivity to relieve pressure with the surrounding areas. There's only so much space in Provo, so we have to ha- expand. Unless, yeah, so we have to work with the cities around us um, to, to help alleviate uh, the pressure. We've got to keep in mind that also wage pressure is going to increase home prices also. And uh, so I think we've got to plan by uh, balancing out the density and overall, and we also have to manage the cost of living too, because that's also part of the equation.
Thank you, Hawk. And then, uh, Catrice.
Um, yeah, so I agree exactly with what George Hanley said. That was exactly what I was going to say to a degree. So thank you, George. And um, I think that we need to work up our density downtown. Um, one thing I did learn with, I went with the Provo Housing Authority. And like George said, we do have a disproportionate amount of low income housing, but the irony is that affordable housing now isn't about the lowest income earners. It's actually about, you know, people are making 60, 70,000 a year, can't afford a home. Um, I think the density downtown, we need to go up more and we need to go smaller square footage. You know, there's a market now for micro apartments or micro homes that we can do along the corridors and downtown areas close to mass transit where it's appropriate. And like Zach, was Zach, I can't remember his name, said about the um, going higher up and higher density too by BYU. You know, parking is an issue. We need to figure, address that too with that, but we can do a lot more with those two things. And help, I also agree with the impact fees and working flexible on that. I love that the Provo Housing Authority is now doing land use, workhouse housing where um, we can get affordable housing.
Thank you. Okay. Um, thank you for your question, uh, your responses for question one there. Uh, so for our next question, some of you already actually touched on this a bit. Many cities across the US are legalizing ADUs, accessory dwelling units. Um, these type of units are um, either a secondary unit that's on a separate structure on a lot are oftentimes are like basement units or something like that that are renting out to other people. Actually, the state recently just made a push to legalize those more uh, throughout the state. So right now, Provo currently heavily limits ADUs to certain neighborhoods, mostly around the uh, historic and downtown area of Provo. Would you support as a potential council member, would you support allowing more ADUs in different parts of the city? If so, how would you expand ADUs in the city? Um, if not, please explain why you'd be against that expansion of ADUs throughout the city. And we will start, we'll just move one down. We'll start off with Rachel off the bat.
Yes, I absolutely support it. I, I think that we've, that's the lowest hanging fruit to increase our, our housing supply. If you can add one more unit to every, every housing structure or to every lot of land that is large enough to accept another unit, we should do it. In order to make this happen, we may need to look at the parking requirements that we have, at setback requirements that we have, these other things that limit the ability for property owners to be able to use their property to both increase the housing stock and to be able to afford to live in their house. A lot of people buy houses because they have an accessory dwelling unit, knowing that they have to rent out that unit in order to make their monthly mortgage payment. And as you've got people on fixed incomes with the prices going up, being able to rent an accessory dwelling unit is a huge part of their being able to stay in their home as they age on a fixed income. So yeah.
Um, so the next would be Zach.
I completely agree with increasing access to ADUs throughout the city. I, I'm generally a big proponent of people being able to do with their property what they, what they want. And I, as far as they want to responsibly have an extra unit on their, on their property, they want to have a a basement apartment, something that they rent out and that, especially if they can handle the parking. I, I don't see a problem with that. I, I think it's a huge benefit to the community. It helps to alleviate some of the housing issues. And since I'm, you know, one of the younger people, right? I'm, I'm one of those people that are in need of low, of lower income housing. Um, it opens up the opportunities for people and yet, and other people who are in young families like me. Uh, I, I don't see a, a major drawback to allowing the responsible expansion of ADUs throughout the city.
Okay, thank you. Uh, next would be Erin.
Yes, um, I support uh, greater access to ADUs as well, the expansion of ADUs throughout uh, the city. I think it's an incremental uh, but important way to increase the uh, housing supply. Uh, it helps as, uh, has already been suggested by Rachel, helps uh, increase affordability for everyone. Uh, it also respects, uh, you know, property uh, rights. Um, and uh, it allows people who, who own property in Provo, homeowners uh, to, to profit uh, from their property uh, rather than, you know, relying on outside developers to come in and build, you know, big projects that may not fit with the character of a neighborhood. So an incremental approach uh, offered by ADUs is a really attractive one.
Okay, thank you. Uh, next would be George. Oh no, Koi, sorry, Koi.
Thanks. So in HB 82 that passed, um, the effort there was to just utilize existing housing stock to, as a multiplier. We still have to re- remember that, that uh, these apartments uh, still need to have a variety of code things, but rather than go full code where they have to have one hour separation, split utilities, split HVAC, all of those kinds of things. We were able to manipulate that a little bit in the codes and uh, again, what that bill actually did was uh, say that it had to be owner occupied. So we need to look at a variety of different things in this way. Uh, I think it's doable. The way the bill was passed made it reasonably affordable. If they have to enlarge escape windows, interconnected uh, smoke and carbon dioxide detectors, there's a variety of those things that that we added to the bill to ensure public safety as, as we move forward. So it's a great idea. And I think we should move forward, but we need to protect the public at the same time.
Thank you. So that would put us next with George.
Yeah, uh, there's some chat in the uh, chat conversation about this. There is, we did expand the ADUs in the city, but yes, there are limitations to it. And I do think they're probably still worth uh, looking closer, more closely at. Um, the, the sort of the tendency, I mean, because I think what Rachel described as aging in place is really the goal. Um, the, the problem, of course, is that it can potentially backfire and that it incentivizes predatory landlords and uh, maybe ends up uh, you know, being a disruption to the stability of the housing. Uh, the residential uh, quality of the, of the community. Um, so we've got to find that balance, but I think we're, we're um, definitely um, going to need to have that conversation and again, help people understand that this is uh, and hopefully come up with the right balance of policies to make sure this is about aging in place and, and uh, uh, helping people to stay in Provo.
Okay, thank you, George. And then Hawk.
Yes, um, so as I, as I was saying before, make the best use of our current resources first before we build more and uh, bring in more congestion. So I'm good with uh, basements uh, for uh, for supplying the housing. Um, I'm going to question about building up because I don't want us to become like Japan. Uh, it's quite a mess over there. Uh, if we do consider building up ADUs, I, I think these appropriate areas uh, we need to protect the single family residence as areas and zones. Uh, we do, I, I would look at around, uh, around the university student areas and those less inclined to drive in order, in order to prevent congestion. So it's best to do it around with, with city planning to do this better around in lower traffic areas.
Okay, thank you, Hawk. And then that is Catrice.
Um, hello. Yes, um, I agree with a lot of what George said again. But the um, you know, this is a thing we need to be cautious about, but look into it. When I met with um, McGinn of the, he's the director of customer of customer service, customers, no, it's community services. Um, a big thing is enforcement, right? With current ADUs. As I've been talking to residents, um, number one, we do offer the whole city can do 65 and over can do ADUs. And a lot of people don't even know that. Like that's something we really need to educate people on. So that, you know, the aging in place is set up already. And that's wonderful. You know, they can have someone, they can have an ADU and it's not an issue for 65 and over. So that's a great asset. And then um, the causing, the problems have been in other neighborhoods is that enforcement hasn't been done well, parking, noise. You know, the number of renters, all that kind of situation. And I know the city is working on that and that's going to make a huge, just me game changer when we talk about ADUs. Is getting the enforcement in place to make sure it's done successfully and makes the most of the neighborhoods.
Okay, thank you, Catrice. And that puts us at Landon.
Yeah, um, I, I love it. I'm a hundred percent in on expanding. And, and I can personally say I, I have an accessory apartment. And you better believe that first week, Provo City came knocking on my door to find out who lived there and, and that I was doing things legally. Um, I've heard that from a lot of citizens. I've heard of people who actually didn't have it legal and they got shut down. And, and maybe that's something that needs to be reevaluated. Uh, most of my neighbors have accessory apartments, but they also have off-street parking. Um, I think that's probably one of the issues, especially in the historic neighborhoods is we need to make sure that we're not getting an investor that buys a single family unit, turns it into an illegal duplex, there's parking all over the place and the aging population next door is no longer loves the place they've lived for the past 30 years.
Well, thank you. So we got one more question and then I'll be turning the time over to Austin for his stuff. And some of you guys did, again, we're touching on this. It's all land use, everything's all interrelated. Uh, we're seeing a trend in many different uh, cities across the US and abroad as well. That they're going through and analyzing and reevaluating their parking policies. Um, and they're often finding that their parking requirements, they're requiring too much parking for, whether it's housing or commercial uses. So if you were to come on the Provo City Council, would you adjust the city parking policy from what it currently is? Um, if so, how would you adjust it? Um, if not, why would you keep it the same? And we will just move down one more again on the list. And I started what last time with Rachel. So Zach, if you might, don't mind starting us off.
Sure. Uh, parking is a really big issue around where I live in Joaquin. Uh, all of us deal with it. When I pull out of my driveway, it's almost always like this death scare because you're like, because there's cars parked all along the street. Trying to peek around to see if there's anybody coming and it's really difficult and I don't know many people who haven't had close calls. So parking is a really big issue around here and um, the one of the things that I'm worried about as we go forward and as we, we figure out a solution to the parking problem and I've heard talks in the past about uh, doing uh, payment systems for on-street parking. So on-street parking isn't free. And I think that there are some definite benefits to that, but the one thing that I'm worried about is making sure that the student population isn't the one that ends up footing the entire bill. And so if we do that, I, I know that there's already free parking options for students that it um, down by the, the, the water park, uh, Seven Peaks uh, that the city provides and that it's a place where students can park. I, I think that free parking options for students is an important thing to addressing the problem.
Okay, thank you, Zach. Uh, we'll move next to Erin.
Thank you, Spencer. I would definitely uh, take a look very carefully at getting rid of parking minimums. I uh, believe strongly that um, it, we really don't have, uh, and people like to say we don't have enough parking in Provo. Uh, we have plenty of parking. The problem is we have too many cars. Um, and once again, this requires a comprehensive solution. We need better transit. We need uh, better ways for people to get around uh, in other ways. We need more, greater density. We need uh, you know, people to be uh, closer to uh, their destinations, whether that be, you know, grocery store or their work or school. Um, so this requires a, a comprehensive solution uh, to get where we want to be. And then of course, this is once again related to the, the air uh, pollution problems. And all of this goes back to quality of life. Uh, so a, a, uh, a community that is less reliant on cars and less reliant on, on, obsessed with parking is going to be one that's a, a lot happier uh, and has a greater quality of life.
Hey, thank you, Erin. Um, so next would be Koi.
When I served on a planning commission, parking came up every single development. I got really, really tired of always talking about parking. So um, I think in the business world, there's an adage that says a product for everyone is a product for no one. We need to remember density is something that we're going to have to address. We need to be cognizant of the makeup and the uniqueness of each of our neighborhoods. And a one size fits all is not necessarily the best approach there. So you know, we got chastised a little bit in, in other uh, communication with uh, another event. And we talked about density and stuff and used the term balance. And they said, quit telling us balance, you know, appropriate, well planned, all those kinds of things. So parking has definitely always been an issue. That's one of the difficulties living in a university town. But obviously we need to look at this a, a bit broken up rather than just, well, one size fits all approach.
Okay, thank you, Koi. Uh, next would be George.
Yeah, I can just tell you, uh, you that uh, the current council has approved a position for a parking coordinator that is uh, going to be filled soon. And that's because we see this as a, as a really serious problem that deserves a lot of focused attention from a, a specialist. And we're also in the process of developing the um, Joaquin Parking Plan. Um, I would also just add uh, maybe in a slight difference of opinion with Zach, I'm very sympathetic to cost to students. I'm a professor and the students are my uh, bread and butter and I love them, but I do think that it is problematic to expect the Provo City to provide free parking for everybody. Um, free park, there's no such thing. Just like there's no such thing as a free lunch. In fact, parking is extraordinarily expensive. And somebody has to pay for it. And I don't know what the solution is exactly, but I, I would like to talk to BYU uh, to incentivize students to not bring cars. And I would also want Provo to provide better services in their last miles so that they don't need the cars. Uh, it's easy for me to say they shouldn't bring it, but I, we've got to make sure we actually make it livable for them.
Yeah, thank you. Um, next would be Hawk.
So there needs to be enough parking. Parking can be a real problem. We don't have enough parking. So that's the starter. So I would not reduce uh, from currently. Uh, I mean, look at, look, look at the problems with downtown Salt Lake City with, with the mess of, of parking up there. Um, but, but here's the thing, parking helps preserve open space and it prevents too much density and congestion. If you reduce the space, that increases density and congestion. Also, uh, that's quality of life issue, um, as it was a factor in attracting businesses. Businesses don't want to go to places where parking is a, a mess. Um, the, the future is that The, the future is that cars aren't going away. With electric vehicles where they can do self-driving and so on, where cars can, may help to reduce the congestion, we have to support this future development.
Okay, thank you, Hawk. And then it'd be Catrice.
There are a lot of different aspects to this, right? There's the student issue and, you know, we need to work with BYU. I love it that, I met with UTA today. And I love it that BYU and UVU bought, you know, UVX passes for their students, huge difference. And it's, the ridership on there is amazing and has helped with the car issue. But I also agree that cars are, even with, no one's gonna, we're not gonna get rid of all the cars. Now, I went and did a tour of the Provo Housing Authority. And interesting thing is that they have a number of elderly homes, correct? Now their parking was completely empty. We need to look at this place by place, development by development. That the elderly housing units, they do need way less parking. That would be great. But some of the student units, I can think of two in particular where they're 300-plus spot short of parking. And I met with a group of BYU students and it was their number one complaint. It's a huge issue for them. So I think we need to look at it. There's not one-size-fits-all. It's going to depend on the area. And, you know, we need to work towards walkability. We need to work towards the mass transit that makes sense, especially for the students. But, okay.
Landon.
Yeah, I, I know most of what has already been said. I think this all, it all ties together, everything we've talked about this evening. We've got to be deliberate in how we plan things. And we've got, if we want something to happen, we've got to make it convenient and we've got to make it actually functioning. So if you want the students to not have cars, we got to make sure that we have the proper bus routes to get them to where they need to go. We got to make sure that there is that walkability. I think of other large towns that have done it right. And, I mean, I can go all over, if I'm a student at the U, I can go anywhere I want within walking distance or I hop on the tracks that I've been given a pass from the university from. So it can be done and we've just got to be forward-thinking. There's, there's too much parking in some spots. There's not enough parking in others. Anyone who's lived in Provo, who's tried to park where students live, knows that that's the real holy war. It's not against the other university. It's.
Thank you, Landon. Okay, then we have Rachel, still.
Yeah, so Paul Evans in the chat said that every vehicle operating in residential zone must have an off-street parking. That's not entirely true because when we bought our house, it's old and it had zero off-street parking set up for it. And there are many houses in the downtown area that are in a similar situation. Some solutions that I see for parking issues, clearly, we've got to go neighborhood by neighborhood. Like putting metered parking in the downtown area be a great idea. And it actually has the support of a lot of the downtown business community because it encourages the turnover so that their customers are going to be able to have access to their businesses. I looked at the Joaquin parking plan. It's my understanding that we want to try this out as kind of a prototype. I think doing a trial run of that is a great idea so that we can see how it works so that we're dealing with concrete data and how it actually functions in the real world instead of being worried about what may or may not happen with it. Another solution I'd like to see is the option of different parking types. So non-permeable parking surfaces. Right now, it just has to be asphalt or concrete. If you have pavers or green pavers, you can use it as a multiple-use space.
Thank you. Thank you guys for your, your comments and for your input and debates. I'm going to turn the time over to Austin now for his section.
Hey, thanks everybody. So I'm Austin Taylor. I run BikeWalkProvo. So I'll be asking the transportation-related questions. If you don't know, BikeWalkProvo is an advocacy group that's been around about 15 years and pushes for safe streets. And especially streets that are safe to walk and bike on, people of all ages and all of them. So the first question for transportation is, this comes from a comment, someone commented on Facebook, he says, it's Jake Dustin, maybe not, he says, "How do you envision Provo's transportation system in 20 years? And as future managers of the city budget, what infrastructure should Provo City invest in to get to that vision?" We're going to start, who did you unmute? I think it was, you started with Zach last time. We're going to start with Aaron.
So a, a, hopefully in the near future, if we, if we make the right decisions, if we get our priorities in order, we will have a transportation system that allows people who want to to, to move around Provo without relying exclusively on a automobile. They'll feel safe doing so. It will, they'll go, they'll feel comfortable doing so. And this requires not only good transportation infrastructure, but it, as we've discussed, it requires changes in our land use policies. So obviously, this is going to be easier for some people than others. And we need to, you know, our, the demographic of students are most likely going to make this transition. But this is something that others can do as well. And if they do so, their quality of life and the quality of life, our collective fall life as a community will be greatly enhanced.
Thanks. Okay, you got Coy.
Thanks. Probably the best thing to be looking at, I mean, Provo just finished the 2020 Transportation Master Plan. It's a little over 150-page document. There's a lot of ideas, a lot of good things in there. But we need to always remember, a little bit like Aaron just said, land use and transportation, they're, they're inseparably connected as land use affects transportation, vice versa. Obviously, we need to coordinate the assessment, evaluation of our land use decisions as we move forward and how it exists our current and our future transportation systems. You know, those that have traveled around a bit, most any city worldwide would love to have street widths that we have. There are a variety of options that we could use. My in-laws live in Pittsburgh. And I've seen a variety of different ways of doing it when streets that are much smaller than they have. So the encouraging of buses and while we're doing it, you know, electric vehicles and the pollution and all those things need to be tied in. It's not just moving people around, but we need to be cognizant of our environment as we've talked earlier about. But people need to access, sorry, go ahead.
Thank you. And next is George.
Well, I can't really tell the future exactly, although I wish I could, but it certainly cannot be sustainable the, that we continue to use the automobile as much as we do. I don't, I think I would like to encourage people not to worry that talking about active transportation means you're anti-automobile and suddenly people who own automobiles or who can't ride a bike are not going to get around town. That's, that's not going to happen. But we have to, we have to adapt to electric electrification of vehicles. We've installed, I think, 20 or 30 new charging stations in Provo and we need, we're probably going to end up having to do a lot more than that. And I would love to see that, you know, that ability that we're all describing where people of all abilities and all ages are able to get around comfortably in the city without having to, and if we can reduce the collective vehicle miles that we're traveling as a city, we're, we're doing right.
Thanks. Next we have Hawk.
Yeah, so it's been mentioned a few times, but I think we get a plan for the future of electric vehicles. Self-driving technology is going to be a big, huge thing. It just may reduce the number of cars that are owned and driven on the road. I think the city needs to plan for that, including in the infrastructure planning. And then also, as part of this, we want to plan for roads connectivity to surrounding areas of the city. Again, we have to, they have the infrastructure in place. There's only so much space in the city. We have to plan, we have to plan for this surrounding areas of the city to read the pressure from within the city. In doing all this, we've still got to keep in mind to preserve the single-family residence areas. That's sacred to the residents of Provo. And then lastly, walking, biking around dense student areas and pop, like multifamily, that may continue to be a consideration as for now for efficiency, but also for life quality as well.
Thank you, Hawk. Catrice is next.
There needs to be balance, right? We need to balance air quality, street safety and the convenience for everyone, whether it's bikes or cars or walking. There's going to be electric cars, like we mentioned, electric bikes also, which is going to make a huge difference. And the charging stations for all of those, you know, self-driving cars are in our future, which will decrease car ownership. I think that we need to just balance these things with quality of life. It needs to, it needs to work for everyone equally. We need to be considering all types of transport. I know there's, I've talked to UTA today and there's a lot of, they have many plans as far as moving UVX or the UVX all the way up to Lehigh for commuting and even further south and to the airport. And there's, you know, over those years, we're going to have a huge difference on the mass transit options that are fast and efficient and cheap for the city to use.
Thank you, Catrice. Landon is next.
Yeah, I think the question was, what do we anticipate 20 years from now? And honestly, I anticipate that we're going to continue the way that we have. I think Provo has been on the front end. I know with the UVX, UTA has said that they're going to get rid of that middle lane all the way up State Street. And like Catrice just said, I think that's in the future. I think connecting other cities to Provo is going to really help. Right now, it's hard to, to use only mass transit if you do need to run up to Orem or down to Spanish Fork or somewhere else. I, we're not going to be able to get rid of cars completely, obviously, but there are going to be more options. I left the state recently. I took an Uber from the airport and then I rode an electronic bike for one week straight. I wish I would have got a workout, but those electric bikes are sweet. So I think those are the future. If I'm, if I'm buying stock 20 years from now, electric bikes is where I want to have my investment.
Self-driving electric bikes.
That'll be, that'll be cool. Got Rachel.
Yeah, where I think we'll be in 20 years and where I want us to be in 20 years are two very different things. If I had my wish list, you know, right now, we have one major public transportation hub and that's down at the Front Runner Station. The buses go down there, UVX goes down there. But that's the only hub and it's operating on this kind of spoke system, which makes it horribly inefficient if you want to get from the west side to BYU. And so I would want us to have a really good east-west corridor. I'd want to have another kind of UVX BRT route that's going on Geneva or on 500 West and connection with additional hubs, a hub on the west side, a hub maybe by the stadium. I don't actually think that's going to happen in the next 20 years though, but I think we have to hope for it because then we may get one of those things. It's the dreaming big that makes even the incremental progress possible. But yeah, I agree. We're going to see more bikes. So we need to beef up our bicycle infrastructure so that people feel safe riding their bikes. I got to live in Belgium for a year and there were grandmas riding the bikes to the grocery store to do their shopping every day. I want to live in a city like that.
Thanks, Rachel. Okay, and then Zach.
Yeah, it's been a while, but if I remember your question right, it was like, it was what we imagine.
I can restate it.
That would be really helpful. Thank you.
Is what's your vision for transportation in the next 20 years? And you, as a city council member in charge of the city's budget, how are you, what are you going to invest in to get there?
Okay, thank you for the recap. First off, if my ideal vision, right, the thing that I would love to see is a city full of meaningful places that people want to be at and options for getting from those meaningful places to other meaningful places. That means that perhaps we have a high-density, mixed-use area with plenty of local businesses over near Provo along 700. Right? So along that, that UVX corridor. Maybe it, it includes, well, it definitely includes the city center, which is already fantastic. But I want to live in a world where people have options, where they don't have to drive a car every time they want to go somewhere where they have the opportunity to ride their bike or they have the opportunity to jump on a bus if that's more convenient. Electric bikes, I agree with everybody else. Those are awesome. I would love to have an electric bike. And my point is, is that it's achievable if we help create meaningful places and connections between our meaningful places.
Thanks, Zach. Hey, so I've got two more questions. And before this question, I'd recommend, you know, focus on your candidates, focus on the video. It's tempting to look at the chat. But this video is being recorded. It's going to be shared widely. Voters are going to watch it. So I would focus on the debate mostly. The chat will not, the video will. So the next question is about UVX. Here's the question. Original plans for the UVX Bus Rapid Transit System called for a stop on 900 East near the BYU Creamery. Due to neighborhood backlash, the stop was pulled from the construction, leaving thousands of car-free BYU students at Heritage Halls and hundreds of households in the Tree Streets neighborhoods without a bus stop nearby. BikeWalkProvo volunteers collected over 200 signatures from residents in that area who are now asking that that UVX stop be put back in. If you get on the council, would you support the construction of this 900 East UVX stop? Why or why not? We're going to start now with Coy.
You know, again, I think we've talked multiple times about balance and certainly, I think looking at that from a neighborhood standpoint, I get it that that's an issue, but we can't all have just, we've got to take the Yimby approach on, on a number of these things. So obviously, we need to work with UTA and with SAFE, but I think the utilizing the ability of our power as a city to make those kinds of requests, do a study, see what it's going to cost, see how much the state's willing to help out with that, how much we can afford to help out with that. I think there's, there's a variety of different options there. We need to get ridership up. If that's one of the things that it takes, it's certainly worth the effort.
Thanks, Coy. Next is George.
Yeah, this is, I maybe would, I could quickly offer some explanation that we are actually waiting for UTA to give us more information about what the estimated costs of this would be and where that funding would come from before the city can make a decision about it. I also have committed to my neighborhood because it's a little bit divided on this issue, that we would have a discussion of it, a proper vetting of the issue. But I am supportive of it. I think it's needed. I think it's important for, especially with the music building there. I think it will alleviate some of the parking pressures. And I think it will continue. UVX has been such an extraordinary, I don't have the data right off the top of my head, but if you want it, I can get it. But the UVX has been extraordinarily successful. And COVID obviously took a dent out of that, but there's no doubt that even more convenience along that route would be, end up being well-used and would be well worth it. But we, we expect that conversation to happen as soon as we hear from UTA.
Thanks, George. Okay, next is Hawk.
Yeah, I think we need mandate from residents to do so. Obviously, they didn't, they didn't like it the first time. The challenge with the BRT is we didn't get a vote from the residents in the first place. And so we don't have a lot of public support. Compounding the problem is the fact that, you know, the, I've heard a cost estimate of up to $150 million for BRT. But when you look at the usage, is the, is the usage justifying the cost? And my current impression is, I don't know if that is true currently or not. And so, so we have to respect the, the will of Provo residents. We just can't force things on people. So I think we're going to look at alternate options. Again, we've talked about this before, but I can see this is where self-driving vehicles may be a potential long-term solution that we need to look to, maybe look into earlier adaptation because of the problem such as what we're talking about. That we need to look to maybe look into earlier adaptation because of the problem such as what we're talking about.
Thanks, Hawk. Okay, Catrice.
Sorry, my computer is going to die. Okay. 9th East, yes. So I have, as as mentioned, I did talk to you UTA today. And you know that the UVX line has about 12,000 people a day before COVID. The numbers have lessened with COVID, but before COVID happened, they're looking about 12,000 users a day, and that's huge. It's one of their number one lines in the whole state. So. The neighborhood has been asking for it, so that does change it. I do think when I was talking with. The UT representative today, which she's she's like, you know, the neighborhood didn't want it. We respected that, and I think it matters what neighborhoods want. So. Now that they are wanting it, I think it definitely needs to be addressed and looked into, like George said, and. The music building makes a huge difference there, too. The students are using it. It's been successful. It definitely needs to be addressed.
Thanks, Catrice. And next is Landon.
Yeah, so my thoughts on on all things mass transit are probably going to come off a little bit on the. Business banker side, but I'd like to see, I'd like to see that it works before I give the money. So. I am, what I'd love to see is, let's try it out. Let's do a pilot before we pay for the infrastructure. Let's see how many people are using it. Let's take that to the neighborhood. Give you have real facts and maybe maybe this is already in place. Maybe there this has happened in the past, but. If if it's being used, then I am all for it. And that's not just on on 9th East. That would be routes from east to west that'd be routes out to the airport. That'd be routes all over. Let's give them a shot and. If people are using them and the net benefit is there, then let's invest. Dollars to do it.
Hey, thanks, Landon. Hey, Rachel.
I absolutely support putting that stop on 900 East by the Creamery. I've actually had several discussions at the city and with the mayor about this as part of the advocacy. It really just shows how there was really a lack of imagination. For how good this would be for the community. And now that we see UVX and it's going through and it's. Connecting everyone along this route, but this little chunk of the neighborhood is excluded from the benefit of UVX. Now they want in on it and it's it's really too bad. Because it's going to cost more to put it in now than it would have done to do it right at the beginning. I think it's a huge argument for us to be more ambitious as we're doing these projects. And to really work on building the support of the community to let them see the vision of what our city can be. And how this can help our families and our kids move throughout the city. So yeah, I'm all for it. It's going to be great with the music hall. It's already. Would be great for the law school. When I was there, I would have loved if my stuff was closer to the law school than it is now.
Thanks, Rachel. Hey, Zach.
I also support it. I think that it's a huge benefit. I've spent a lot of time riding on on UVX and. Those those buses are packed a lot of the time, especially during the day when, I mean, it's 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 down since COVID. But but yeah, when school is normally in session, those those buses are packed and it's hard to find a seat sometimes. I and in this and with 900 and especially with the the building of the the with the addition of the music building and the loss of the law school parking lot. I think that it's really needed right now more than ever that we have that stop there at on 900. And it would be a huge benefit, I think, because students would love it, and I think it'd be a benefit to the rest of the community as well.
Thank you, Zach. Last is Aaron.
Yes, I too would absolutely support the construction of the BYU Central Station there at the Creamery. They should have been built when the original system was built that the the city shouldn't have caved into a vocal. Minority of the residents of the Tree Streets. It's unfortunate that it does not exist now. Buses are already going down that street. They should be stopping there. Many of you know me as somebody who is very passionate about active transportation, but I'm also very passionate about. Transit, it has the ability and it's proving that it has the ability to really change our transportation paradigm. I was on the stakeholder committee for the UVX project. And we knew that it was going to 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 be great and it's proving to be a wonderful system and it's it's too bad. That, you know, the residents of Heritage and the Tree Streets are not enjoying those benefits right now.
Thanks, Aaron. This is the last question of the transportation section, and then afterwards we'll move on to your closing statements. So and because it's Provo, I guess we're ending with the parking question. Parking's not bad here. This is a question from Jake Destin as well. He just brought really good questions. He says, parking is consistently an issue talked about in Provo politics. Some residents believe Provo City should require more parking lots and garages to be built. Others point to the fact that there are over 10,000 parking spots downtown, covering 58 acres or 25% of the downtown land area. And suggest that our community could better manage its parking assets through pricing and shared parking. As a city council member, what policy solutions would you use to better manage parking? And we are starting with George.
Well, I think I said something about this earlier, but that's why we've created this position for a parking coordinator to. To look at that and no one knows more about how messy it is than you, Austin. So you were you were working hard on that when you worked for the city, and I think it's absolutely true that. We're not fully utilizing all of our parking that we do have available and we're and we're. And yet we're very crowded in other parts of the city, and so that's why I think we have to take a pretty comprehensive look. At the the solutions that are out there and the downtown, I mean, I don't know, there's lots of different issues. If we're going to talk about Joaquin, that's a different. Animal than talking about downtown, but as far as downtown is concerned. You know, we've got to make sure that the public's actually using the parking that's available down there. Before we we do much more because that's un underutilized. And if it's going to remain that way, then we've got to look at other options to figure out what the proper solution is.
Thanks, George. Hey, Hawk.
Yeah, I'm not sure that that is will necessarily be our solution. I think if we look at other cities that implement these types of solutions and see the outcomes and results they achieve. It may not be that encouraging. For example, look at Salt Lake City. They have. They have built parking where you have to pay, but when you drive up there, whenever I drive up there, there's still a parking problem, right? But but the other thing is, we don't want to take steps that will move us towards density. And I think that may contribute to that. What I think we need to do is spread the density out by building in. In other areas of the city, there's only so much space in that downtown area. We got to encourage movement into other places because when you try to use a a an easy solution just to to. There's a video that that you guys showed us where drivers, there's a percentage of drivers where once. The roads become less congested.
Hawk, you have a minute, hurry. I like this story, though. It was going to a good place.
I'm sorry.
Hey, Catrice is next.
Um, again, parking is just going to be different in every part of the city. I love downtown. I spend a significant amount of town time down there. And I agree that parking, you can find parking downtown. I always can. We put new signage up recently, which made a huge difference. We need to keep doing that to make sure the signage is there to show people where to go, because I know there's a lot of people. That act like that aren't aware of the parking, so it needs to be visible and easy to find like in other cities that I've lived in. The Joaquin area, I mean, there's some, we have these beautiful white streets and one of the things that's very easy to do is some parallel parking, I mean, not parallel, diagonal parking. Would make a big difference down there. Again, these these housing units that are always going to be senior housing units with the Provo Housing Authority. Let's get rid of half that parking. Let's not make them have to do that. They can do other things with half that asphalt. But there are definitely parts of city that we cannot do less parking and there are students, again, where buildings are 300 spaces short of parking. And it is a huge deal for those students. And now they're taking up places in churches or other places and. You know, they're walking a long way to their house, which is dangerous at night and there are safety issues there. So. There's not a one-size-fits-all for the city at all.
Thanks, Kay. Landon.
Yeah, I completely agree that it is. It's going to be situational. Different neighborhoods need different things. A commercial downtown needs different things. I don't know how we could incentivize it, but one thing that I would love to see as it relates to parking is. Do not go horizontal, but to go underground or to go above ground, just to better use the space that you have. I mean, the redevelopment of the city center temple, I think they did a great job. There's, in my opinion, plenty of parking right there, but I don't have to see it. So, yeah, I'm not sure how we incentivize getting it out of the view and better utilizing the space, but that would be great and. Essentially, just neighborhood by neighborhood, making a rational, smart decision.
And finally, next is Rachel.
Yeah, so when I was riding my bike to work this morning, I go up 200 East and I pass the Alta Bank, which is just off of Center Street. And it's got this giant parking lot behind it with at least 40 spaces. All the signs up saying Alta Bank Customers Only. Nobody's ever there. And there are lots of spots like that throughout the downtown area. There's that weird lot that's south of Brazos, just north of the liquor store. I don't know what's going on with that lot and nobody else does either, which is why nobody's parking there, even though you've got all of this. Open spot, this huge lot that's taking a valuable real estate downtown. Or like there's a super weird hidden parking spot behind the the oil rig auto at Allen's Camera. Off of Freedom Boulevard between 300 and 400 North. The neighborhood chair took me on a tour of the neighborhood. You've got drug deals going down in this vacant parking lot that's hidden in the middle of a block. So, yeah, absolutely. We need to look at. Using parking smart and getting rid of stupid parking lots that just take up dead space and. Dull the vibrancy of our downtown. I think we can do a lot better and if paying for it, sharing it, let's do it.
Thank you. Kay, Zach.
One of the challenges that we're facing with parking parking is allocation. There was a study done in Joaquin neighborhood. I think it was somewhere between five and 10 years ago. I don't have the exact number. And what they found was that there was more. There were more spaces in Joaquin than there were cars. And one of the challenges that we deal with is a lot of people just choose to park in the road instead of inside their apartment complex or their complex parking lot. And so one of the keys is that we need to find ways to incentivize people to not park on the road and park inside of their. Their complexes where possible. Another thing that we need to be doing is, and then Rachel brought this up, and I think it's it's useful. Is realize that there's a lot of parking spaces that just go unused. And if we find ways to share those those spaces across groups, then maybe that's the business leases out their parking spot for a semester to. Like one of their parking lot spaces to a student, maybe that's the solution. The key, though, is that we bring all of the people together and have a real conversation about this and and work through the problem because it's not going to be easy and it's going to need to be. Different based on where we're living.
Hey, Aaron.
Yes, one size may not fit all of Provo when it comes to these parking issues, but. One thing that needs to change is that this needs to become a priority. And the the very fact that we've had three, well, two and soon a third parking coordinator. In less than three years certainly shows that the administration has not provided adequate support. For for the person who was in that position. There there needs, the council needs to hold the administration accountable. And make sure that it implements the parking reforms that the council has already endorsed. So I will do that as a member of the council.
Thanks, Aaron. Okay, and then last is Coy.
Thanks. I'm kind of an advocate of public-private partnerships, and so I know the state does it a lot with rest stops and other things, so. There are parking lots available. I think Rachel mentioned that. So I think. Trying to work with businesses and others to have that public-private partnerships with regard to parking. You know, it was mentioned earlier about parking meters. If you'd like to see one of the old original ones that were along Center Street. When the city took them all out because the businesses got tired of them. I have a nice one. I painted it red, the magic fire engine. We we've tried a lot of things over the years and we cycle back and I think. Maybe with the new technology where people could do things with their phone and pay online a little bit like they do in Salt Lake. Proper noticing signage that Catrice mentioned. I mean, there's a lot of great ideas. I know we can solve this. I know I I know when we hosted the Olympics in 2002. We got people in and out of the city so fast, we didn't make any money off of the tourists. So. You know, this isn't, it's always a constant problem because we don't have a long-term solution and with turnover. We've often caved in in a lot of the parking issues, so. But I I would be a big advocate of trying to develop some better part public partner, private partnerships. Thanks.
Thanks, Coy. Okay, that wraps up our transportation section. Thank you all for participating. Side note, what Rachel said about drug deals, parking lots is true. I know this because I subscribe to news alerts. Based off things that happen in parking lots in Provo. Most newsworthy happening in our parking lots are bad things, just so you know that. They're not good. So we will move on to closing statements. We're going to be lenient on time for closing statements, so we will. Give you guys two minutes on this one. So we looks like we're going to start with. We're going to start with Hawk on this, so you've got two minutes to do your closing statement.
Thank you. Thank you very much for this discussion. It's been enlightening and it's been great. So thank you to everyone. I'm running for office because Provo is home and I want it to remain that way. I'm I want to ensure that our city and the communities remain safe, secure, and our liberties liberties and rights are protected. This is as if not even more important to our quality of life in Provo than the the issues we discussed today. I believe in following the Constitution. When I was given my commission as a US Army officer, I swore to uphold the Constitution. I believe that all who hold public office have this important stewardship and accountability to do so. And must not deviate from doing so, no matter the pressure to do otherwise. We must all keep in mind that we will all be accountable to God someday. Our constitutional rights must be observed by our government officials and not take on powers not explicitly delegated to them by the Constitution. Especially those that potentially infringe on the citizens' freedoms and rights. The government is here to serve the people, not dictate to them, and has more power and has no more powers. Than delegated by consent of the governed, of the governed. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Hawk. Okay, Catrice.
Um, in conclusion, I just want I want to thank you guys for hosting this. I appreciate your time and energy on it. It was very organized, Austin. One of the reasons I want I'm running is a desire to create. And nurture unity in the city of Provo and open spaces and parks are one of the, you know, the great leveler, right? There's something that everyone can enjoy and everyone has access to and they need to be a priority in the city. I also want to foster unity wisely using zoning and planning and development. We all need access to amenities and services. For example, we need everyone to build a bike safely downtown for a night out. We definitely need grocery stores in the south and the west. We need, we need to tackle portable housing with different and updated zoning, right? But third is the city, we have our neighborhoods and they're so valuable. And they have unique amenities and different things that all of us can enjoy. There's east, there's west, south, north, but we all belong to Provo. And I do believe that we can work together and to lead Provo to a great unified future and another plug for the Provo app.
Okay, thanks, Catrice. We're going to download that app when it when it comes out, whenever that is. Okay, next is Landon. Okay, next is Landon.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks everyone. This was, this was a lot of fun. Um, all of my, all my city council friends told me before this, hey, you just enjoy this tonight. You've probably never been in a debate before and you don't know how many more you're gonna be in, so um, enjoy it. So this was fun. Thank you for setting it up. Um, I just, in conclusion, we've talked about a lot of fun topics tonight. And most of those have to do with the quality of life that we enjoy here in Provo. We all live here for a reason. We all want to have the highest quality of life we can. Um, a- again, I'm coming back to being the finance guy, quality of life costs money. One thing that we didn't talk a lot about tonight is growing our vibrant business in Provo. And that's one of my absolute main focuses. That's what I've dedicated my career to. Um, honestly, Provo should, should be at the top in Utah County and Utah. And I feel that we have room to grow. Um, the reason why it's so important to everyone as property owners, as taxpayers is if we have more sales tax revenue, then we don't have to increase our property taxes in order to pay for all of these things that we want to enjoy. So I just wanted to add that, I, I felt like we didn't hit that hard enough, but I'm, I'm here for business. I want to grow it. Um, I want to make rational decisions. I want to take care of the, the limited land that we have. I want to preserve what we need to preserve to enjoy Provo. Um, we gotta be, we gotta be diligent, we gotta be deliberate. And we gotta think not just short-term. Um, we gotta think for the next 20, 50, 100 years about how we grow, how we expand, how we maintain. So, um, thanks again, everyone.
Thank you Landon. Hey Rachel.
Yeah, thanks for putting this together. This has really been a lot of fun. I'm, I'm running for Provo City Council because I really love going into a room and pulling together different ideas and making sure everyone's heard and coming to a solution that nobody had thought of when they had entered the room at the beginning. Um, one of the things that I learned as a neighborhood chair is that people don't feel like their voices have been heard if they don't get what they want. But if you are representing different people with different points of view and you're working with the constraints of city budgets and agencies, you're not going to be able to give everybody what they want. And so the responsibility as the council person then is to communicate with them to show how their ideas, how their concerns and their needs that are very real influence the solutions that you finally got to. So that they can see that they did have a voice, that they were heard and that their input has made the city better. And I'm really excited about doing that. I really believe in coming together to get pragmatic solutions. Let's get the stuff done so that we can move on and live our lives in a really great city. And we have to make really prudent decisions. We have a responsibility to take care of our taxpayer funds, but also our natural resources. Because both of those things are finite and if we don't use them well, we'll use them badly. And that will not serve us or our citizens well at all. I'm really excited to see how Provo is gonna grow in the future. And I believe that if we're smart about how we make decisions to allow for that growth, we will improve the quality of life as we increase our density, as we welcome more people into this community. We'll still be able to have our kids riding bikes in the streets, just like they could 50 years ago. Because we are going to make those streets safer for them. I mean, this is the Provo I want to live in. I'm so excited to be here.
Thank you Rachel. Zach.
So first off, I'm really grateful for all those who set this up. I think it's been a fantastic opportunity. It's felt a lot less like a debate and a lot more like a good conversation around the issues that Provo is dealing with. I think that we have a fantastic city and it's a place that I've come to really love. Um, I grew, I, growing up, I moved a lot and I never really got to have one place to call home until coming to Provo, right? It's, it, that's really what it's become to me. And so I'm grateful for the opportunity to have this discussion with everybody. I think that going forward, I want to make sure that Provo invests in, in benefiting and building up places of value within our city. Making it so that we increase the business going on within our city, improve the business environment. Um, build up the, the opportunities that we have to have meaningful growth that adds to, adds to the city. I, I think the budgets are a huge constraint and, and economic side is, is something that I'm focusing on really heavily and in my, my campaign, but everything is, everything comes together and everything kind of revolves around a lot of these same problems. And so I think it's important that we come, come up with holistic solutions that address each of these issues as, as we come together. I also think it's really important that we include, include all the voices within Provo. Um, one of the benefits that I have is uh, as the husband in a young family and also as a graduating student is that I have thoughtations that may be more difficult for others to, to engage. I have a, a clear connection with the student population, with the young family population. And one of my main goals is making sure that they're brought more into the fold moving into, moving forward. And that they have an opportunity to participate in, in the discussion.
Thank you Zach. Aaron.
Thank you, Austin, and thank you uh, to all the other organizers, also the, the other participants. I um, think it's wonderful that lots of people have stepped up to run. Um, also thanks to those who have tuned in or will tune into this conversation. I think it's been really enlightening and important for our city to have uh, difficult conversations about really important issues. Um, I'm running because I think Provo is great, but I think it could be even better. We need to uh, embrace uh, our identity and our values. Uh, we're one of the only uh, cities along the Wasatch Front that has a vibrant historic downtown, so we should build on that. Uh, we should, uh, we're also the most urban environment in Utah County. Uh, and we should uh, embrace that urban identity and that our, and our, and our policies and procedures here in Provo should be in line uh, with, with tho- those values and that identity. Um, I'd encourage you to visit uh, my website, aaronforprovo.com, take a look at the video and the other materials about uh, my track record and my experience. As I mentioned, uh, I've not just, you know, now talking the talk, but I've been walking the walk for the last 15 years. Bringing together people in my neighborhood and throughout the city, getting them involved, listening to them. Also bringing BYU and the city together to, to collaborate and, and communicate in many ways for, for the first time ever. And uh, that has brought about, you know, some wonderful changes uh, to our, to our city. Uh, so I, I thank you for your engagement. I thank uh, everyone for, for the conversation. And I hope we continue to have these uh, conversations going forward.
Thank you Aaron. Next is Coy.
Well, uh, thanks. Thanks Austin, Spencer, Dawn. Uh, appreciate your uh, hosting and uh, asking the questions. And Dawn, thanks for wearing the tie. I've got another thing to go to, so. Um, I, you know, I'm a firm believer in limited approach to government when it comes to our city. Uh, there are some critical areas where leadership and vision need to continue. They're necessary to support and defend our freedoms and help each of us pursue independence and our own happiness. Um, you know, I, I really want to have that continued sense of belonging to everyone. I mean, obviously, as George mentioned earlier, we want to plan for our posterity. It's mainly gonna be our children, grandchildren that grow up here. And we have such great uh, opportunities, job opportunities, quality of schools, universities, our social networking options and religious reasons for living here, so. Um, obviously, our state and city are currently experiencing unprecedented issues with our housing markets and skyrocketing property values. You know, I have some experience working and serving with local community organizations on providing affordable housing option. I really want Landon to get more houses going out there too for us. But I'm hopeful that perhaps soon we can have further conversations about air quality, about land use and issues relating to water quality and quantity. Just uh, so you know, as a candidate for Council District Five, which I believe is the central core and the heart of our city. And given my experience in a variety of different areas, I believe you can see I'm a, I'm a fairly uh, capable and qualified candidate to serve. I appreciate those others who are, who are also very much involved in what, what happens in our city. Uh, I just would like to serve our district and, and participate in these many critical air, uh, areas. And I just appreciate your kind consideration, support in this election, so thanks.
Thank you Coy. Okay, and George, and I believe George is the last.
All right, well, I uh, echo the thanks that have been expressed for this wonderful event. Um, I think it's really healthy for our city and for democracy to have uh, vigorous discussion like this and it's been really educational uh, for me. I would say uh, just by way of reflection in my time on the city council, I've really come to appreciate how valuable it is to get input from people. Um, kind of building a little bit on what Rachel was saying. I, 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 I've found that governing well is extremely hard work. It's very difficult. And, and I, and so it requires a lot of patience and it requires a lot of hard work and rolling up your sleeves and listening to one another and coming up with pragmatic solutions. And I am so appreciative of citizens when they come to me with their ideas and their concerns. Uh, because it helps me to govern better. So I will always uh, strive to be a good listener. And um, I'm passionate, I've been passionate all my life about bringing people together around the table and getting the best ideas moving forward. Um, doesn't matter who they come from or where, you know, who, where they come from or who, who expresses those ideas, as long as they're practical and they're, they're gonna get us some solutions, then that's, that's what matters. Um, so I, I will continue to do that work and I, I think I've been so impressed with the candidates tonight. I'm glad none of them is running against me. Uh, so I appreciate that. And I just think, uh, I think the Provo City looks like it's, it's gonna continue to be in good hands. I've uh, been so honored to serve with the people I've worked with on the council, uh, both the past council and this, in this current council. The city administration and staff have been fabulous. It's, it's a great community to be a part of. The only thing that saddens me is when people harbor uh, concerns or resentments without expressing them. And I think it's important that people uh, speak up. So I hope you'll continue to do that as citizens. Thanks.
Thank you George. And uh, I want to thank all the candidates for coming. You know, I reached out and every single one of them responded, all of them. I was very surprised. Every candidate wanted to do this. I can't say the same thing about the mayoral candidates. Like, I'm not gonna say anything bad about them, but this is a very special group that we have here, running for council. And uh, I'm excited for the future of the Provo City Council. Uh, thanks for everyone for attending. We didn't have any disruption, so it was great. The last thing that I will say is I'm putting in a plug for an event that YMB Provo is hosting this Saturday. Spencer and I are coming to you from the startup building in the startup district just south of downtown. This is an area that's rapidly redeveloping. And so on Saturday, a bunch of the developers of this area are going to show off their projects. Everybody is invited to come. So I just wanted to put in that plug. Dawn, do you have anything else that you want to say before we wrap up?
No, I, I agree with uh, George. I'm impressed with the quality of candidates and the quality of their thinking. Uh, their serious purpose and uh, uh, the research that a lot of them done and the background, they uh, they're not just uh, blowing smoke. It's uh, it's, it's good to, to hear people who are serious about doing it and George's comment about how, how hard it is to be a good, to do, to, to govern well. It, it, it isn't easy. And George has, has uh, has shown that he's, he's uh, he's, he's done the work. And uh, I, I can't believe how, 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 a wide, what a wide variety of people uh, have uh, participated in uh, in Provo's uh, growth and it's great.
Okay, thanks. So the ballot should have hit everybody's mailboxes. You need to turn them in by August 10th in this primary election. And then we'll have the general election. So I will be posting this recording on the Bike Walk Provo YouTube channel tonight. And you can share it with all your friends and family members. Thanks everybody for joining.
Thanks to Austin for putting this together. He really, he really did it. Appreciate it.
Thanks everyone.